Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, October 4th, to order. Thank you for attending. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Think about whatever it is you want to think about. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Lee in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Mr. Crupp, if you please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Dickman.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, and welcome as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For folks in here, especially if you just put your cellphone on silent, please, or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone is above you. Love to know your name, order, and address. If you've not been here, we'd love to know where you're from. We would love you to please address the council as a body and not as any one individual. And then I'm going to read something else. Please take a moment and listen. Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. But let me be clear. This will be the only warning we're going to give for disruption of the City Council Committee of the Whole or any meeting here. We want to hear from everyone. We want to hear from everyone who wants to speak on any agenda item, on any public business, anything particular. All citizens should be able to speak and be heard without disruption. You will be asked to leave this building if you disrupt this meeting. We will pause the meeting or adjourn the meeting if needed. Again, this is your only warning. Please do not disrupt the city council meeting. Please allow everyone who wants to speak to be heard. Thank you. Is there any city administrator update? Ms. Mallory.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. We have three public hearings this evening, one under community development and two under finance. First one is under community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case REZ 23-04, being the request of Jason Cusino to rezone approximately 1.19 acres of land generally located southeast of the Grand Avenue and East 46th Street intersection at 801 East 46th Street from RMF multifamily residential district to I-1 light industrial zoning district. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Ma'am, just so you know, your light's on your phone, so it's shining. Thank you for that. Yep. Next is finance. Alderman Condon will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two finance public meetings, public hearings. The first item is a public hearing on granting an overhead electric easement across city-owned property south of River Drive at East 4th Street, parcel noted, to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And our next public hearing is a public hearing granting a gas and regulator station easement on city-owned property located at 3,000 East Locust Street, parcel noted, to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address our second public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that concludes the public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next, we have one proclamation, Indigenous Peoples' Day, which will be read by Alderman Lee. Alderman Lee, please.
Thank you. I am honored to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Davenport values diversity and strives to be a welcoming community to people of all cultures and background, and whereas the city of Davenport recognizes the sacrifices Indigenous peoples have made and the hardships they have had to endure in order for us to have this beautiful area in which to live. Whereas Indigenous peoples have made many positive contributions, both locally and nationally, in the areas of the economy, science, philosophy, arts, cultural beliefs, and being stewards of our environment for the benefit of all. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day allows for all people to honor their ancestors who overcame challenges so that one day their descendants might reap the reward of living equally and peacefully with one another upon this earth. And whereas in 2017, the city of Davenport was the first city in Iowa to issue a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day and is part of a growing number of cities, counties, and states to recognize the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in order to promote association, reconciliation, understanding, friendship, and continued partnerships among all its people. Now, therefore, we, Mayor Mike Maxon and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Davenport, encouraging all residents to learn about the cultures, contributions, and values of Indigenous peoples, and urging the community to be in solidarity with Indigenous peoples across the United States. Dated this day of October, 4th day of October, 2023. And I would like to move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. And I would like to invite Martin Chaney and Tom Morell to come up, and I'll meet you at the podium. Thank you. And this actually should be every day because we're living on Indigenous land.
Thank you.
So, you want to... I present it to you.
Thank you.
And would you like to say something?
Oh.
And again, the microphone's right above you.
You want to say anything?
I'll say something.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you. It's a very nice gift that you've given us. And on behalf of the Intertribal League of American Indians, I'm the president, we thank you. And as far as all the American Indians in this area, we thank you for acknowledging this. And thank you very much.
It's a great honor to receive this. I hope it leads to more cultural events, performances, and expansion in the area. Thank you very much.
And I would just like to say that I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of tribes across the country, and I'm very excited about the intertribal work that you'll be doing.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to petitions and communications. Anyone? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real simple, just a little announcement for Sixth Ward meeting coming up Tuesday, December's... or, excuse me, not that far in advance. October 17th, 6:30 PM at Duck Creek Park Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a statement. Alderman Kelly has made a false allegations against me. He has falsely accused me of making racist remarks towards him. I do not take these allegations lightly as they are very serious. I have never and did not make any racist remarks against any person or Alderman Kelly. There has been media coverage regarding these falsehoods. As a result of these untrue claims, I am pursuing legal action to bring forth the truth. I have filed a petition in district court to clear my name of these slanderous statements. I support any investigation that the city of Davenport chooses to pursue and will be compliant and forthcoming. I support any investigation from the city that involves taking statements from any aldermen who were present at the time of interaction. It is my hope that the investigation and the court case will shed light on the truth as I did not and have not ever made racist remarks. I hope the city and the courts can resolve this matter quickly and find that the accusations made by Alderman Kelly are false. It is my goal to move forward and focus on serving both the city of Davenport and the people of the Fourth Ward to advance the matters that are most important to them. Thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to highlight some fun events coming up at the Davenport Freight House. For the next four Fridays, the Fridays in October, it's going to become the Freight House. And in the evening, they'll have food vendors, music, fall activities, face painting, and a signature event for each week, which this week is showing of a movie, Casper the Friendly Ghost. So it's a great fall event if your fall bingo card isn't already too full. There's also a public survey available right now. The Riverfront Improvement Commission is taking a survey of our citizens to see what type of programming you guys would like to have on the riverfront next year. And that's a link is available on the Facebook page. Always enjoy a great day on our riverfront, specifically at our Freight House. And it's a beautiful setting, but what the magic is, is so many people like yourself come out and fill that area with great energy. So again, please take the survey and let us know what types of things you would like to see on our riverfront next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So I see why there are so many police presence this evening. It must be for me because the irony is, I welcomed your lawsuit, and now I'm going to put everybody on blast. So now that you're going to be an ass. So we have to remember that J.J. Condon was in the room, Kyle Whip was in the room, and Rick Dunn was in the room. So you just remember, when you try to go to pursue something legal, that I wasn't there by myself. So you just be prepared, sir. If that's what we want to do, I'm ready for it.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Okay, so everyone at the dais. If you want to make any statements against anybody, do it somewhere else than here. Personal attacks are not okay. So this goes to all... This goes to all of us. I'm speaking to...
Say something to me.
No, I'm speaking to the dais. I'm speaking to all of us. All of us. Please refrain, all of us. All of us. Alderman Lee. Alderman Lee. Mr. Kelly, please. Alderman Lee. They're not, sir. Alderman Lee.
First, I have a question. The executive assistant and administrative assistant have cleaned out their offices several weeks ago. The door is generally locked, and the lights in the office are turned off during the day when I've been there. The PowerPoint presentation provided by the city administrator to candidates on September 19th show both positions to be vacant. I need to have the joint Seventh and Eighth Ward meeting for October 12th pushed out to the public, but I don't know who to ask to do that. I will fill in for Alderman Cornet in the meantime, as we've been holding joint meetings for most of the year. So who should I contact to push out the meeting since they are not there? They've routinely done it, and I just...
First of all, I want to caution you about talking about personnel matters on the floor of the council. It's not appropriate. Second, we will get back to you on how we can assist you in that endeavor.
The next point was, I was going to talk about the task force. And this is a surprise about a lawsuit. I think this is... The people who are involved know who they are, and there are people in the room who were not involved who also know who they are. They were seen. And I'm going to say, I believe Alderman Kelly. When he stated that a person used the N-word multiple times and that another alderman used the words "nice colored man," they were not aimed at anybody in the room, but they were So I don't know if we still have a task force now that we have a lawsuit, but I really think this could be handled a whole lot better just by the people taking responsibility and the mayor insisting that they take responsibility for their actions.
Not a white woman in America.
I was also... I also want to say something about there have been inferences that... and public inferences that I... and these were... okay. The public inferences from someone at the dais that said that I released that email written by Ms. Spiegel regarding the administrative assistant and executive assistant. I left on an out-of-state vacation on Thursday morning, August 31st, and I purposely did not bring my phone or my iPad because I wanted to get away from the city drama. I found out about the email from two different councilmen. My personal phone, mid-morning Friday, as we were headed south to Tennessee, one of whom read the email to me. I told a TV journalist who called me on September 5th while we were returning from vacation that I had not seen the email, so I could not comment on it. I saw the email for the first time the night of September 5th when I opened my iPad and checked my mails. I have already discussed the issue with corporate counsel. I do not expect or even want an apology, but this has got to stop that I was the one who released it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Just wanted to make comment regarding Alderman Lee representing the Seventh Ward in absence of a Seventh Ward alderman. I do want to say there are two aldermen on this council who are elected by the Seventh Ward. That would be Alderman Condon and myself. We have been stepping up to field any complaints from Seventh Ward residents because they are also our residents, and we will continue to do that. And I would say to staff, Alderman Lee is not elected by those folks in the Seventh Ward. She does not serve them. Alderman Condon and myself are happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move. I'm going to take a privilege and move finance first. The next four areas, we'll have finance, then community development, public safety, and public work. So Alderman Condon, finance first, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have eight items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to grant an overhead electrical easement across city-owned property south of River Drive at East 4th Street, parcel noted on the agenda, to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one? Counsel? Item number one, we'll move on. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to grant a gas and regulator station easement on city-owned property located at 3,000 East Locust Street, parcel noted, to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Counsel? Thank you. Item number three is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of splash equipment for the Dose Splash and Play project to Waterplay Solutions Corp. of British Columbia, Canada in the amount of $118,994.37 using Sourceville contract noted. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Counsel? Thank you. Item number four is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of play equipment for the Dose Splash and Play project to Landscape Structures, Inc. of Delano, Minnesota in the amount of $110,042.40 using Sourceville contract noted. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number four? Counsel? Then we'll move on. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to make the appropriate inter-fund transfers for the city's fiscal year 2023 financial records as required by the Iowa Administrative Code, City Finance Committee Agency, Chapter 2. Is there anyone wishing to address item number five? Counsel? Thank you. Item number six is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the North Urban Renewal Plan to include the internal TIF. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? Excuse me. Excuse me. Please step to the lectern and state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is David Ezra Citron. I'm a resident of the Third Ward. This is number five, resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to make the appropriate inter-fund transfers, right?
No, sir. I already passed by that one on the agenda, so that item is already concluded.
Well, I'm sorry I was slow.
Yeah.
I sure would like to know what this was about. Would anybody care to enlighten me?
At this time, I'm not going to entertain the privilege of moving backwards on the agenda. The item on the agenda is item number six, a resolution awarding a public hearing for the proposed Northern Urban Renewal Plan to include the internal TIF. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Counsel? Thank you, and my apologies. Item number seven is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 budget policies. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number seven?
Yes.
Please step to the lectern and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Ezra Citron. I'm a resident of the Third Ward. I'd like to know what the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 budget policies are. I'd like to know if you're moving money around to cover Zinzer, $1.2 million, for the destruction of 324 Main Street. I'd like to know about the other funds you're moving around for 324 Main Street. Would anybody care to elaborate on what you're doing in fiscal year to move around millions of dollars in the budget to cover the 324 Main Street disaster?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gary Ecklin, and I live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. And since 2021, the city of Davenport's neighborhood department has declared me and all of my black neighbors...
Excuse me, sir. This is only pertinent to item number seven on the agenda.
Right, and it's budget priorities. I wanted to say that I don't know what that means either, aside from what it says there, but I think...
My apologies, sir. If you're not able to speak to the issue on the agenda specifically...
Right, the budget priorities. I want to speak to budget priorities. And it's my perception, my personal perception, from years of living in the city and being forced to come down here again, that the budget priorities always favor the wealthiest people and do not favor people who work at minimum wage, don't favor people who work in nursing homes cleaning up incontinent people, and that our budget priorities are backwards. We're constantly giving money to people who already have money, and we're saying, screw you, to people who work at minimum wage.
Okay.
And there's a real disrespect by people who make over $100,000 a year for people... I don't know if you've ever lifted somebody who... if you've ever been in...
My apologies, sir. We really need to keep...
Well, isn't this budget priorities?
I appreciate...
I'm trying to speak to budget priorities.
I can see that you're trying...
I'm a working, poor person concerned about budget priorities.
Sir, I apologize. We have public comment at the end of the meeting, and I think this comment might be more appropriate for that time on the agenda. Right now, we're focused just on this.
I mean, I don't mean to be rude or disruptive, so I mean, if I have to sit down, but I think that talking about the situation of people who work in nursing homes lifting up people who weigh 300 pounds after they've had a seizure...
I'm doing my best to help you out, sir, but I do believe it would be more appropriate if you did have a seat.
I think our priorities are backwards because we seem to have a hatred for the poor.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? And counsel? Alderman Lee, please.
I'm sorry. I turned my button on too early because we still have number eight to go.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so no one else from the council? And finally?
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you. Ms. Mallory, could you explain what this item is about for everybody? It might clarify things a bit.
Sure. The GFOA, which is our guiding body for financial matters, advises that cities, especially those of our size, as the first part of the budget process, actually adopt budget policies that will guide both staff and the city council in the development of the next-year budget. So that's simply what the item is that's on your agenda, and there is a copy of the budget policies attached to the agenda item online.
Thank you for your help, Ms. McGinnis. And Alderman Lee.
Thank you. I would like to ask that number five and number seven be put on the discussion agenda.
Noted. Finally, item number eight is a resolution naming the community room located at the new fire station 3 as the Chief Michael J. Hayman Community Room. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address item number eight? Counsel? Alderman Lee.
Again, I would like to ask a question about something on the $10,000 to $50,000, so you let me know when that's time. Okay?
Certainly, when we get to that point in the agenda. Anyone else from... Alderman Lee, are you finished?
Oh.
So very nice sentiment on item number eight. And concluding our items on the finance agenda, we have purchases from $10,000 to $50,000. We don't read each of them individually, but they are listed here on your agenda. Alderman Lee, if you had a question or a comment on one of these items, now would be the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Looking at the first one about tri-state crane for 324 Main Street, we've received two summaries of the costs associated with 324 Main. I think the last one was in August. Will we be receiving another one, please?
Yes. It typically takes us a couple of weeks into the following month to close out the prior month, so as soon as last month is closed, we will distribute that to you.
Oh, so the end of this month, probably?
Yeah, probably here. I would say within the next week or so.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Gripp, would you set our finance agenda, please?
Yes. I make a motion to place items five and seven on the discussion agenda and then all of the remaining items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next area is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-03, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC on behalf of Ed Spear Construction, Inc. and Sheila M. Spear Living Trust to rezone approximately 16 acres of land generally located southeast of 53rd Street and Spring Street from C-2 Corridor Commercial District and RMF multifamily residential district to C-3 General Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is also a second consideration ordinance for case ROW 23-04, being the request of 53rd Luxury LLC to vacate approximately 25,900 square feet of improved Spring Street right-of-way located south of East 53rd Street. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number three is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-04, being the request of Jason Cusino to rezone approximately 1.19 acres of land generally located southeast of the Grand Avenue and East 46th Street intersection at 801 East 46th Street from RMF multifamily residential district to I-1 light industrial zoning district. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderman Lee, please set our agenda.
I move that items one, two, and three be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Community development is... Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Lee. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Ortiz will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule VII of No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Jefferson Avenue along the west side from East 38th Street north to the dead end thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule XI Resident Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Chapter 10.96, entitled Schedules of Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding Scott Street along the west side from Rush Home Street to Lombard Street, along the east side from Rush Home Street, south 355 feet thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, first consideration ordinance amending Schedule VII No Parking of Chapter 10.96, entitled Schedules of Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by removing Perry Street along the east side from 12th Street to Kirkwood Boulevard between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, except holidays therfrom. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, resolution approving street laner public ground closures on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, project renewal. Neighborhood Halloween Party, 906 West 5th Street, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. Closure, West 6th Street from Warren Street to Myrtle Street, Vine Street from West 5th Street to West 7th Street. Next, Tom Simmons Veterans Day Parade downtown with um, parade route attached online, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Saturday, November 11th, 2023. Closures, Western Avenue from 5th Street to 2nd Street, 2nd Street from Western Avenue to Main Street, Main Street from 2nd Street to 4th Street, 4th Street from Main Street to the finish at the Scott County Courthouse. Next, Quad City Arts Festival of Trees Holiday Parade downtown, online has the attached parade route, 4:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., Saturday, November 18th, 2023. Staging area closures, beginning at 4:00 a.m. East 3rd Street from Pershing Avenue to Leclerc Street, Pershing Avenue and Iowa Street from East 2nd Street to East 4th Street. Parade route in place by 9:15 a.m. 3rd Street from Pershing Avenue to Scott Street, Scott Street from West 3rd Street to West 2nd Street, 2nd Street from Scott Street to the finish at Iowa Street. And last, Village of East Davenport Business Association Christmas in the Village. Village of East Davenport, 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, December 1, 2023, and Saturday, December 2, 2023. Closures, East 11th Street from Mile Street, New Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street north to the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. We have item number five, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. Again, I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Downtown Davenport Partnership, German Fest, Kaiser-Schlitten Square, 119 East 3rd Street, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturday, October 21st, 2023. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Tom Simmons Veterans Day Parade downtown with parade route attached online, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Saturday, November 11th, 2023. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Next, Quad City Arts Festival of Trees Holiday Parade downtown, um, attached parade route online, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Saturday, November 18th, 2023. Outdoor music performances over 50 dB. And last, Davenport Parks and Recreation, Federvary Holiday Lights, Federvary Learning Center, 1800 West 12th Street, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., every evening, Saturday, November 25th, 2023, through Sunday, January 7th, 2024. Outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Last, we have item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read um, the one under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Miracle at the Freight House, 421 West River Drive, number two, new license, license type Class C liquor, on premises. And then we have uh, those under Section B, annual license renewals, which I do not read, but are there for review. And then I do want to make note again of the item regarding Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen, 831 West 3rd Street, outdoor area license type Class C liquor, with staff recommendation of denial to outdoor area. So I would first just ask, is there any uh, comment from public on um, the one item for the new license or any of the other items under renewal before I go to the Yoshi's? Seeing none there, I would ask if there's any public with comment on the item for Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen. If you are, step to the lectern. Name, order, address.
I'm Yosuke Zanadan, I'm the owner of Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen in Third Ward. I'd like to start off by reading um, a subsection that uh, surrounds the outdoor service area, which is the, which is what is being recommended for denial by the city staff. Uh, Iowa Code, Section 185-4.13, Subsection 123, Outdoor Service. Any licensee or permee having an outdoor contiguous discernible area on the same property on which their licensed establishment is located may serve the type of alcoholics liquor and beer permitted by the license or permit in the outdoor area. After a licensee or permee satisfies the requirements of this rule, they may serve and sell beer in both their indoor licensed establishment and in their outdoor area at the same time, because an outdoor area is merely an extension of their licensed premises and is not a transfer of their license. Alike, with that being said, misinformation has been represented to the council. And with, and with that information, I would ask that uh, one of the councilmen or aldermen bring this issue to discussion, to give me more time to address the council, and provide correct information regarding not only my license, but more importantly, the conduct or the alleged conduct of my bar that has led the council to recommending denial of my outdoor service permit. I do not have enough time to be able to defend my, my bar and myself against the allegations that were presented to me, uh, presented against me in the five minutes that I have here to speak freely. So I would invite a alderman um, to bring this matter to discussion.
Is there anyone else from public that wish to comment? Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Um, I am Katie Stewart, I'm Ward Eight. Um, I have been blessed to meet Yoshi fairly recently, um, but I drive by his bar all the time. He's a hardworking man, loves his family, and I just can't see why there's an issue. He had less calls to the police compared to another bar that's up on Cheyenne, I believe. But yet, the PowerPoint from the other week didn't even have that bar on there. How is that fair to Yoshi? How is, I mean, people can still go outside. I've never seen any issues down there. I've been there late at night, I've driven by, I've never seen issues. I've seen issues in other bars that aren't even in Third Ward. So, I really think it boils down to race. I'm sorry. I do. We see the race issues in this council already, and it's been years. But the type of music, and demographically, a lot of the races are diverse in that place. That is the issue. I feel at home there. For the first time, I found a bar that I like. And the food's good. And their drinks are pretty good, too. I have sex on the beach, I mean, um, pine, I mean, Melvin Pine. So I would encourage each person to go and have a drink there, and eat their food, and get to know the staff, before making any judgment on a place based on anonymous um, people's letters or, you know, concerns, because this man worked hours and hours and hours on his presentation that he did on Monday, and trying to defend himself. I don't know anybody that would just let people come in, the police, to look at cameras, footages without a warrant. I have never heard of a place. If he had something to hide or something going wrong in his bar, he wouldn't do that. He'd fight tooth and nail. It, you know, you guys talk about it being 2023? Yeah, it is. Let's stop punishing smaller bars that are trying to grow. They are growing. I've driven by them, there's not been issues. I've seen, you know, an, with prostitution, again, one up on Cheyenne. I seen a gun out in somebody's hand, same bar, but they got their license back in August. How is that fair? That has everything to do with race. Sorry. And I'm a white person saying that. I'm embarrassed to be a Davenport resident that we're still dealing with, with race issues. But it's time to wake up. We have it. And it's sad that it took a building for all this stuff to start piling out, but I have, I'll say it again, what's done in the dark will always come to the light. I, I think he deserves to have his liquor license. I don't think it should be um, denied. I will be going there as often as I can to support his business. I'm almost 42 years old, and I'm not usually in the bar scene anymore, but that is one bar that I feel safe in, that I am faithful that I can go there, and I can even take my, my oldest kid there. I can't say that for any other bar in, in Davenport. This man has pride in his businesses, and he's growing, and he will continue to grow with this community's help. There are people on my Facebook page I would never thought that would ever go to a bar, but they love Yoshi's, and that's the only bar that they'll go to. So I encourage the ones that want to speak against wanting his license to go there, not just one time when we have time, go there again and actually talk to him, see his presentation, because he worked hard on that and did very well with that. So give him that opportunity to present his case, just, just put this on the discussion, and go down there, have a drink, eat some food. They even have pop there if you don't want to drink. And the music's actually nice. I couldn't understand the language, but it's good, you know? We love you, Katie.
Please state your name, order, address.
Jessica Knolls, Second Ward. So, you know, I, all week long, I've been contemplating, supporting by media posts, setting up events for Yoshi's, because I feel that everybody being accused of something should have a single right to publicly address every accusation. Now, I, I set up the event at Yoshi's Monday night. I was attended, I attended, and from what I could see, almost everything that was on, well, not almost every, everything that was on those allegations are not true. I have personally been going to Yoshi's since he's opened, and it's a place where I could actually take my kids, like Katie said, and, you know, I probably won't do this anymore, because I'm publicly putting it out there. I can leave my cars unlocked, in the parking lot, and I know when I go back out there, everything's going to be right where it was at. It's always been comforting, welcoming. It, it's home. That's where I go for my personal relax time, when I do manage to get any. I work 40-plus hours a week, putting a clothing pantry together, kids coming to see you lovely people every week, and making my point across, and getting my voice out there. I don't get down there nearly as much as I'd like to. I just think that you guys should take a moment this week, and just stop in there. Hey, Yoshi, can we see your presentation? Because I'm sure he'll be more than willing to show it. And if not, it is on a live feed that you can watch it. And to watch it and see the allegations, and to see the facts that back it up that it's false. With that being said, I just hope that you guys do not deny the only place that I can go to.
Thank you. Please state your name, order, address.
Mike Guster, Seventh Ward, President of Davenport NAACP. In lieu of the fact, the information that this young man has presented to this uh, council, I believe it is appropriate that you take a look uh, to further discuss uh, his license. This is an opportunity for Davenport to shine at a very dear moment. There's enough going on in this community uh, uh, for us to deal with. He's working, he's trying to do something positive in this community, and for, to have his license, his legs snatch weefing up under him, I think it's the wrong way to go. He's presenting a plan that he is, well, first of all, let me just say, I don't think the, the legal department got it right, because they haven't presented all the information that needs to be presented for you guys to make an informed decision. So, I would ask that you guys do your due diligence uh, to uh, take a look at this here, because here again, we got a young black man that's trying to do the right thing, trying to provide a, 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 a way of making money for his family, uh, uh, in this community, and I think it's only appropriate that you take time, step back, discuss it, and make sure that you know the facts before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. I do not go to bars, that's not my thing, but I am pro-veteran, I am pro-small business, I am pro-for the working person. And you guys all saw last week how passionate he was, how much time and effort he put into doing that is, it's mind-blowing. I have been following him on Facebook ever since this was brought up. I'm asking that you please put it on discussion, please give him a chance. The state got to show everybody their evidence, but he didn't get to show anybody anything, so I'm requesting that all of you please put it on discussion, meet with him, and just give him a chance, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Oh, thank you. My name's LaShawn Dixon, I belong to the Fifth Ward. I keep on forgetting that. Um, I did have the honor of being invited to Yoshi's Bar, and I had a great, it was a great experience. I had mozzarella steak and french fries and a Coke, and it is a beautiful place. It's a beautiful bar, unlike anything, I mean, we have beautiful bars in the area, but to see a young man come up with this concept, it's, it's, it's really beautiful. While I was down, I'm having a snack and having a drink, I didn't get, was able to hear his side of the, of, of what's going on. And that binder is full of really good stuff. It is. So if y'all want to go ahead and do it, I don't think it's fair. He has presented, well, not to, to us, where he showed, where he has security there, and I think he said the quote is like 145 usually per this United States, he provides 1 versus 25. So he has security down there, and he showed us, shows us footage of where his security is located, and then has footage of another allegation, so I don't know how you're going to hold that one up either, so, that's okay. Just please reconsider this, because if y'all do do it, it's not, it, it doesn't look really cute. It's not cute on you guys. I went to the meeting, and I wanted to, I wasn't being judgmental. He admits where some things probably didn't go as should be with the security and expecting a lot of people per what he thought would be there. He, he admits that, but he's fixed it, and that's all you can ask for somebody is fix their error, and he has. He's showing us where he has. Give him time to fix the error before you get ready to take money away out of his pocket. So I'm asking for you to reconsider, for the, the greatness of Davenport. For the greatness of Davenport. And there's great things happening, but with all the negative stuff, we never see it, and we won't see it. Because of stuff like this. It's embarrassing. I have family who is from out of state paying it to you, and I get phone calls. It's embarrassing. So I, I advise, I mean, who am I? I'm just a high school graduate, worked in management, you know, keep old jobs, but I have the common sense to say, hey, maybe we should sit down and figure this out, and I hope you would have that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step to the podium. Name, order, address.
Ronald Voorhees from Davenport, Iowa. I know most of you, I would be in this Seventh Ward. I, the, the only interest I got here is 25 years ago, you guys come after me and my partner's liquor license at the same address. One of your gentlemen off to your, to my right knows what I'm talking about. He got us spanking from the Liquor Commission out in Ankeny, Iowa, when he took us there. The law judge out there told the city what they could not have to happen in that area. And I'm sorry, but everything that we had to change is right back the same thing, and we were the problem, me and my partner, we were the problem, according to your person off to my left and to the person that went out to Ankeny. out to Ankeny through the hearing. We had the cameras, we had everything. The only thing that saved us was, remember this, people, there's two addresses there when we had it. There may be one address now, but there's two addresses twenty-five years ago. And that's why we did not get an outside liquor license. We could only have an inside. And you guys pulled our license for like ninety days until we won Ankeny. I spent lots and lots of money out there. And I just wanted to say to the person to my right, I told him back then, and I'll tell him today, it wasn't our problem. Let the people across your street do their job and clean it up. That's all I got to say, people. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will move to Council Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get started, I wanted to just clarify a few things that I heard, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. So the City Council does not recommend denial of an outdoor area. So the recommendation is coming from the staff. It's up to the City Council to decide whether to agree and deny the outdoor service area. The second thing is, it is not Mr. Haddon's license that is being requested to be denied. That is not the case. It is just the outdoor service area. So, and I understand, he wants to keep his outdoor service area too. I just want to make sure we're all using the same terms. I did want to make comments last week. Unfortunately, it was called to table before we did council comments, so I was unable to make a comment. And so I'm only now able to make that comment publicly this week. And I do also want to make a comment about one of my colleagues calling a meeting that we had with Mr. Haddon, a secret meeting. And I'll assume that it was a slip and not something that was purposefully intended. But this was not a secret meeting. Mr. Haddon reached out to me and asked if I would set up a meeting with our police department, the ward aldermen, and our legal staff, okay? And I said, yes, of course, okay? I will facilitate that meeting and we will make that happen, which is common, okay? And if you guys don't know how the City Council works, typically, the ward alderman and one of the two at-larges, if requested by the ward alderman. And if you need a third alderman, it would be the chair of whatever that committee is. That would be Public Safety, Mr. Jobgen, okay? So this was no public meeting. This was aldermen and city staff getting together with a local business owner who has a problem that he wants to resolve, okay? And I will start my comments out in the same way I started out with Mr. Haddon in that meeting, which is, this is not an adversarial thing. We have a shared interest here, which is public safety. The City of Davenport wants to keep people safe while they're at Yoshi's Bar and while they're around Yoshi's Bar, okay? Yoshi wants to keep his patrons safe while they're at his bar. We have a shared interest, okay? So I want to make that clear. And again, I'm happy to continue to facilitate that discussion with Mr. Haddon and try to come to terms. He also asked for my recommendation, how would you deal with this? And I said, I'm not always involved in these, okay? But when I have been, my recommendation is that you work with the police and legal to identify the problems and come up with solutions. And the bar owners who have done that have typically been successful in taking care of any public safety issues that they have, okay? That was my recommendation. At the meeting, the three main concerns that were brought up by our staff, high number of calls for service, okay? Also, that many of those calls were justified. So not only that somebody called, but when the police got there, there was actually an issue that had to be addressed. Two, frequent large gatherings over a hundred people, right? So we talked about, Mr. Haddon has had some, in the last few months, great success in marketing, which has brought a lot of people to his bar, which has brought on some issues that he's trying to work through, okay? And then the third thing is DJ acts outdoors that are creating loud noises that go above the acceptable allowable decimal level, right? Without noise variances, okay? And he and his security team admitted, yes, we did that, we're sorry, we're not going to do that anymore. But it is the issues that are happening outside that is drawing the large crowds that on multiple occasions have required that the police be called to disperse large out-of-control crowds, okay? And that is really the concern that's being brought forward, okay? I'm not going to say anything else today. There will be more comments next week. I will end with the same thing. I believe that Mr. Haddon wants to operate a safe bar. And he wants to take care of any issues that he has. And I believe that the City of Davenport has the same interest. And if we would not take adversarial approaches to each other, we could figure out how to address these issues. And I'll be an optimist that we can continue to come to the table and come up with solutions. And of course, we will keep this on the discussion agenda to continue to consider the facts that we're hearing as a council. Thank you.
Alderman McGuinness.
I'll keep my comments short this week. I just wanted to echo what Alderman Gripp said. It was a meeting requested by Mr. Haddon, and we did meet with him. And so there was no, it is very typical. It would not be, if there were such a meeting with someone in another ward, it would not be typical for me to be at a meeting of, maybe there was an issue somewhere. You know, it would not be typical for me to be there. So it is very typical that the ward alderman is there, but it is not typical. So I've been through several of these meetings with bar owners. We always work toward a good resolution. We want everybody to be safe and we want everybody to be able to run their business and that it be, you know, a profitable business for them and a healthy business for the neighborhood. And so that's always the outcome. And we often do see a turnaround, and that's really good news. But there have been a number of issues in Third Ward, and that's why we're addressing this. We do have some more information on a survey that was given to council this week on a number of establishments throughout and the calls for service within a year and within a shorter amount of time, just for a comparison for all of this and other things to look at. And I do want to also stress what Alderman Gripp said. This is, recommendation is not to remove a liquor license, which we don't like going there. And there has to be a lot, there have to be a lot of issues when we do that, but to remove the outdoor liquor license. There is a, there was recommendations to Mr. Haddon about your occupancy is ninety, so think about that as a number. We talked about those kind of things in that meeting. It was a, you know, it was about an hour, I think forty-five minutes, an hour meeting. We went through all of the issues that we had and the questions that we had. And it was a civil meeting. So again, I look forward to seeing everybody be successful in Third Ward. But again, keep in mind, this is what is before us, is the outdoor area only.
Thank you, Alderman McGuinness. Alderman Lee.
Thank you very much. One thing that I'm pleased about, and I did watch the video that Mr. Haddon provided. And I understand that you have a large number of indoor and outdoor security cameras and you do make the footage available. And I applaud you for that. I wish all bars in Davenport voluntarily agreed to have cameras inside and outside. There's one I've been asking for quite a while. So I just wanted to applaud you for that. Because that's really the best thing that the police and fire have to go on is cameras, inside and outside. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Seeing no one else, I'll take the privilege to ask a couple of questions and make a couple of comments. And so therefore, if I could, apologize. Mr. Haddon, can I ask you just a couple of questions, please? Please step to the podium. So first, I want to thank you for providing us this information. Thank you for making yourself available to talk with the council. I was just thumbing through, just a quick question, is Central Protection Services, is that who you utilize for your security?
That is one security company there that is actually licensed and armed in the state of Iowa. I used them one time, I think it was September nineteenth. And that was a familiarization exercise for them to basically familiarize themselves with the crowd, the area, points of entry, probable possible problems, and just the demographic of the area. You can't approach every problem or you can't approach every crowd the same way. So I tried to get them familiar with who they were associating with, how to do it, how to de-escalate and not escalate issues. If you're doing security at a college bar and you're doing your security at an urban bar and you're doing your security at a bar in maybe Upper Bettendorf, you would take different approaches on each one. So I tried to familiarize themselves, tried to familiarize this licensed security team that acts on their own accord essentially, as opposed to my own in-house security team, which I train along with my head of security, Ryan Cook, who's also, who along with myself is also a veteran. And we use tactics and training that we received in the military to train our security team. So to answer your question, the licensed security team that I used that day, that was, that was a reference that you were...
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I was just, I saw that and I was curious. And then last week, you mentioned, and I just briefly saw this again, so your outdoor service area for just those months kind of in question, where they've made mention of having some issues. Again, it's less than two percent of your gross revenue, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Actually, to be exact, it is 1.22%. It is a very negligible number.
Okay. And then the last question, you know, one of the things we saw last week was a video from September sixteenth. Again, just to clarify for me, was there a DJ playing music outdoors on that evening?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Cool, thank you. I appreciate your candor and your honesty. Thank you, I'm done.
Yes, sir.
I have some questions there.
Thank you.
And I guess this would again be for our corporate counsel, just to drive home a point. So again, if next week, when the vote goes through, if the vote of the council is to uphold staff's recommendation and deny the outdoor area, Mr. Haddon would still be able to serve alcohol within his business and still be able to operate his business?
Within the building, correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, none of this would affect his operational hours, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So then my comments are, again, I thank Mr. Haddon for his candor and his honesty in presenting. I've never had a direct conversation with Mr. Haddon other than this. In my short time on council, I've seen him come up and, you know, and speak on various items from, I think one time he was trying to just gain purchase of a family home, to talking about some of his businesses in the mall. And so, you know, kudos to someone who's putting himself out there to, you know, better himself and run on his business, you know? So there, I thank you. I had a professor and who's now the director of the PT program at the University of Iowa who would often remind us students, you got to see the forest for the trees. All right? So here, I think we've got an issue where we got to see the forest for the trees. As pointed out, the issue that's been brought forth by staff, again, is the outdoor service area and some of the items out there. My lean is still to say, hey, the issue has been, without outdoor service area, probably the easiest thing to do, the remedy would be to make that recommendation for denial. We're kind of getting into the winter months where I imagine in Iowa, having an outdoor service area is kind of a moot issue, right? I can't imagine that would add much more. One thing I'm just going to throw out to my colleagues is if we do end up withholding or upholding staff's recommendations, I would like to look at, you know, is there, you know, at what timeframe could Mr. Haddon come back and try and regain that permit? You know, six months, nine months, you know, whatever? So hopefully we can have some discussions on that, should that happen, you know, thinking hypothetically. But again, you know, I want to say that, you know, I'm supportive of people who want to run a business and do it the right way. You know, kind of speaking in code here, I don't have a double fecal extraction to provide regarding the demographics or the type of music being played at an establishment. And that's not anything I'm taking into consideration with this. I am just solely looking at, was there a problem with the outdoor service area that was identified? And is there a remedy to address that? And so that's how I will go forward next week, and I look forward to any more discussion. And seeing no one else, I would ask Alderman Ortiz to make a motion to put Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Cantina on discussion agenda and the rest on consent agenda.
I'd like to make that motion. All items on consent, except for Yoshi's, be on discussion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Jobgen. Alderman Ortiz. The next and last area tonight is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for right-of-way easements associated with Goose Creek Trail Phase Three project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Please step to the lectern.
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. Alderman Dunn, is this so that you can use eminent domain to put the path where you want it to go?
We can get some clarification from staff on that.
Clay Merritt, Engineering Capital. Yes, that if we're unsuccessful with negotiations with property owners, this tool, and hopefully we don't have to use this tool, would allow us to move forward to get the necessary easements in right-of-way.
You know, this whole project started out as a friendly bike path that was demanded for four million dollars. The people that live over there have basically been terrorized and felt left out to dry by the city for the way they have handled this. I mean, they get these notices, these intimidating notices, and some of the people that show up there are telling them one thing and somebody else shows up and tells them something else. This is not the way, you know? And then all of a sudden, eminent domain starts coming in. You know, this isn't the way to build a friendly bike path that nobody really wants. You know, four million dollars, really? So thirty, forty-five people a day can use it, really?
And what else? Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Wendy Bartels. I'm in Ward Seven. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came out to see this property. And why going ahead with this bike path, this area has a lot of issues. I've had aldermen, candidates, and concerned neighbors reach out for a tour, and the majority understands the problems. I am so angry right now that this is still being considered. Does everyone truly understand what we're talking about now? Forcing someone to sell their property for a bike path through condemnation? It's not morally right to use eminent domain for a bike path that a neighborhood does not want. The fact that this behavior is being used is just appalling. How can someone say this is okay or acceptable? Please do not say that Walgreens is a big company and they will not miss it. Somebody worked for that money to purchase that property, and this is just unacceptable. On the approving and authorizing, if necessary, the right-of-way and the easements associated with the project, I have to assume this is my backyard. We have already said, no, you may not come onto our land. I have spoken before why this bike path needs to be reassembled. I have spoken before why this bike path needs to be reassessed. I will not agree to making it easier to build something that I believe will flood our house and to have an increase in crime in our neighborhood. If I hear one more slogan of safe neighborhoods are my priority, I'm going to lose my mind. This is demonstrating how untrue it really is. You're trying to squeeze this bike path behind houses, essentially placing the path within a few feet of the property lines. This is unacceptable to the residents on Adams Street, 33rd Street, and 35th Street. Until we have heard the options for the bike path between Kimberly Road and 33rd Street, I ask you to vote no on this. Do not approve this. This is not your best work. Do better. Keep your residents safe. Please vote no until we have total transparency. Please vote no until we understand the option, why the option of putting the bike path on the other side of the creek doesn't be utilized. Why has the railroad agreed to put a creek next to the tracks but yet not a bike path? There are still many unanswered questions, so please vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll move to council. Alderman Greville.
Thank you, Chair. Questions for staff. Could you provide some clarity around using eminent domain? Is there any plans to use that for any of the residents that abut the proposed bike path?
So in order to construct this recreational trail, we, the city has all the necessary right-of-way and easement to put the path in when it comes to the residential properties. So we are not looking to condemn any property that has, that is zoned residential, so no homes whatsoever.
Okay. So in particular, the property that may, may need this is Walgreens? And why have we gotten to this point with Walgreens?
So they, there's about eight individual parcels that we are looking at, and once again, this is just if we are unable to come to an agreement. Walgreens, or the specific one is the one off of Kimberly and Eastern, they do not actually, Walgreens, the corporation, does not own the land. They, I'm assuming, leased the land from another company based, I believe, out of Chicago. We've reached out and spoken to Walgreens. It's my understanding they are perfectly fine with the project. However, because they do not own the land, they cannot sign any agreement. And they've actually tried to help us get in contact with the landowner. However, that, those, that company has completely ignored any phone calls, letters, emails, whatsoever. So this would be a use of, if we're unable at any point to have any communication whatsoever, we would potentially use condemnation.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that with condemnation. As far as the, the rest of the project goes, Alderman Condon and I went out and, well, with Ms. Bartels and her husband, and walked the property and, and understand what their concerns are. Number one concern is the, the water issue, so that area is prone to flood, has been prone to flood approximately once every five years. This project will actually move the creek, in my estimation, 50 to 75 feet away from the properties, which I know some of the, the property owners are, they like that idea, and, you know, some of the property owners don't. And that is pretty, unfortunately, sometimes, right? We have competing interests where people disagree, and respectfully. And I, I think that it will likely improve the flooding, but at the very least, the, the bar that you have to prove to the Iowa DNR is that you won't make the situation worse. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Out of that meeting, the, the other big concern is the safety, security separation from the residents to the bike path, which in other cities and states, it's very common to have bike paths very close to residential properties. In the city like ours in the Midwest, it's not as common, right? So there's some concern there that this bike path's gonna be very close proximity to my house. I understand that concern, okay? I think the city needs to work with the residents, and I've discussed this with you, Alderman Condon has discussed this with you, to come up with what is the most effective way to provide both visual separation and physical separation from the bike path. That could be in the form of a fence, and it could be in the form of hedges or plantings that, that make that separation happen, right? And there's some issues there because it's in the floodplain, because of some other, other things. I want to tell the Bartels, the staff is working on that, they owe that to us. We are coming back to you with those answers, and we will continue to advocate for your concerns, even when at times we disagree about what the concerns are. So I, I want you to know that, and that, that this is just the messy part of government. Sometimes you don't agree on everything, but you have to be nice to each other and try to help each other come to a resolution that everybody can be okay with, okay? And that's what I'm personally trying to do here, because this is a very important amenity for the Quad Cities as a whole, and I truly believe that. But I want to make sure that that street of folks is being represented well and, and having their concerns addressed as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jovian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To our Assistant Public Works Director, question, after this, is there another point in the process where if condemnation were to proceed, that we as a council would be able to weigh in? Or is it next week, you vote on it, and then after that, whatever happens, happens?
From a council perspective, it would not come back in front of the council again. The only time that anything would come back in front of the council is either we have a purchase agreement with a property owner that exceeds $50,000, which is per the purchasing policy is your, your limit, or excuse me, where, where your limit starts, and then, or the construction contract itself.
Thank you. And then, sorry, I just had a brain moment there. I apologize.
Alderman Lee.
Thank you very much. I do that all the time. One, I'd like to ask, put this on the discussion agenda. And two, I've also been out there, I've walked it with Derek Cornet and talked to the neighbors, and I looked at it primarily from the point of view of the creek, because that's my interest and my expertise, where I could be most helpful. The creek right now is full of debris, it meanders quite a bit, and it looks to me like it's got pretty highly erodible soils. And under the conditions, it'll probably keep walking around with erosion and then creating sediment. So I wanted to ask staff, because hydrology of active creeks like this one is, is complicated, and if we make informed guesses about what the creek might do if we straighten it out here and move it over there, all we can do with that is see what happens, if that's the approach we take. So are we working with any hydrologists to look at not only that section of the creek that you're talking about straightening out, but also it's important to look upstream and downstream? Because when you change the hydrology of a creek, particularly straightening it out, it'll speed up the water, and it may also start causing cutting down into the creek as well as changing the erosion patterns. And we don't want to mistakenly create flooding, additional flooding or different flooding problems onsite and offsite.
So I'm happy to speak with our engineering consultant and, and determine their methodology for what they came up with, because once again, to be able to perform the project, we have to get permits from the US Army Corps of Engineers and from the DNR, and to, and we have to provide logic and reasoning as to why we are not making an adverse issue of that particular creek system. So I'm happy to get that methodology for you.
And, and yeah, I'd be really interested in that, and I also know the way the Corps is looking at this is it's taking a, it's, it's using something that's generally tied to transportation, crossing a creek right here, and then applying it to a larger area, and using a nationwide permit. So I'm looking at it not only from the permit side, but also the larger picture of the hydrology and how it might change, and what some of the options, not options, possibilities of how that might change, with straightening here, and, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I would just like to make sure that we're looking at the bigger picture and not just we're crossing here and we're crossing here. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from council? Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Yeah, I also want to thank Ms. Bartels for welcoming us out to the property, and it was a very polite meeting, and you continue to be polite. Your critique just now was, this is not your best work, and that, that's the most polite critique that, that I've had in a while. I would, I would appreciate more sentiments like that. I just wanted to offer a view from this lens. The meeting that I took was specifically to parse out what the city could do for the residents, again, in the way of some beautification and landscaping, or, or even a physical barrier, if not a visual barrier, between the, the potential bike path and their property. So in that respect, it, it's the city trying to make sure that the resident, residential properties are offered something to make sure that this is the best possible version of, of this new amenity for the community. I'm a big believer that you can do anything well, especially if you use a good design aesthetic, and I, and I look forward to continuing a conversation that would be most agreeable to the neighbors for, again, the best possible version of this public improvement. I consider myself a cyclist, and I used to resemble that comment. Truth be told, it's been a couple of years. But even as somebody who is in the cycling community, I'm always blown away by the demand for multimodal transportation in our community. It's not a small special interest group that will only use the path once or twice a day. It's, it's a very large group, and this is part of a multi-council effort to, to create that connectivity within our community, specifically, and most poignantly recently, a, a, a way to safely cross 50, sorry, Kimberly Road for cyclists. So to the extent that it feels like a, a, a small improvement that's unproportionately affecting just a few residences, there's actually a really larger picture that, that's, that's taken quite a, quite a big effort to, to get this close. And it always feels most contentious and most personal, the, the smaller you zoom in the lens, and, and so I, I'm sorry for that. But again, I think we can do this well. I'm glad that the city's doing their best to make sure that it's the best possible version of the, of an improvement for the, for the public.
Mayor Mattson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to say thanks to Ms. Bartels. We talked a while ago on your property, and we walked it. Out of that came the guidance to the staff to not take any residential property. Out of that came to ensure the Corps and the DNR are vastly improving the situation. I'm not, I never promised that we would be perfect, but because of your advocacy, because of our conversation and the work with the staff, and I applaud the respective council members that have continued to work with you, came that we would not take your property and we would not invade this condemnation for a particular piece. Still is in discussion, and I would, and hope that there's some way we can get a conversation with them. But the whole guidance from you to me and to the staff has been to protect your properties and to make sure this does not impact and push the creek away and, and make it better. That's still the same. And I thank you for your advocacy, and just know from me, and, and I think I speak with others, that will continue to happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution authorizing and approving the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for temporary construction easements associated with the flood mitigation River Drive from Cary Avenue to Third Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council. Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I've moved to make that item number one stay on discussion, and then item number two move to consent.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda's set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for tonight. The next area, is there any public or business? If there are, the microphone again is above you. Name, order, address, you know, five minutes. Please address the council as a body. Please remember what I said at the beginning, because we want to hear everybody, so please allow everybody to speak. Please, thank you.
All right. My name's Kay Stort, Ward Eight. 129 days, and yet we're still no accountability, no nothing. And I was thinking this week how three gentlemen, Brandon, Ryan, and Daniel, could be resting in peace, knowing that there's no accountability yet. No light at the end of the tunnel that it's gonna ever happen anytime soon. But I hope that they can rest in peace knowing that we are fighting for them, and we will keep their names in front of this council, however long it takes after election years to come. Because people at hand need to be held accountable. Walt should have paid for that sod. Was told to purchase it from my purr, but then wouldn't do it, and the city ended up paying for it. I don't understand how you tell someone to pay for it when it's his property still, and then, so he doesn't do it, and then the city goes and does it, and where does that money come from? It comes from us. He's still a landlord, he's still raking money in for, still underneath the codes of places that are still open. When are we going to have some accountability? Or at least the light at the end of the tunnel that we're wanting that to happen? I just, I'm sad for the families of these men that want justice. It's still like, you guys are just, some of you are just wanting to sweep this underneath the rug, like many other issues have been, including racism. This isn't new to this council. It shouldn't be no surprise. We've had it with Lacy, along with sexual harassment. It was ignored. She made reports, and whatever happened, ignored. And some that are on this council were aldermen at that time. I'm not worried about baby, honey, sweetie, but I'm worried about someone's butt being touched by a past mayor. I, I don't see why that's okay. And I don't know why any black person, let alone this very handsome, beautiful black man right here, would ever just come out and say that somebody used the N-word. That is such a hurtful word, if you really knew the true history behind that word, not the whitewashed history that is taught in these schools. That man, Aubrey, was called the N-word as he lay dying at the hands of the men that The N-word is a weapon that has been used by the white people since slave time, before slave time, and just weaponized even more. Actually, I would say it's even more of a weapon now. And it takes, it takes a lot for someone to stand up to systematic racism that is within this council. Maybe not everybody, but I encourage whoever was in that room to stand up and do the right thing and say you heard that word uttered. I don't care if you have Hispanic in you, I don't care if you have Asian in you, you're not black. And that word, whether you use the ER or the A, it does not matter, that word is still the same way. I would never utter that word. My kids are mixed, and I dealt with having to hear... And I dealt with having to hear a worker at a place call my kids an N-baby. That's unacceptable.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, please?
Hi, my name is Gary Eklund. I live in Mr. Kelly's ward. And I honestly was not going to talk about anything political tonight. I was going to try not to. But I saw the city truck at my house yesterday and I believe that means that the neighborhood department intends to fulfill a promise that they made in 2020, 2021. Person with the neighborhood department began to tell me that I'm a lowlife. He said, I can't be nice to you because the mayor directed me to come down hard on the lowlifes on behalf of this landlord so he can replace his black tenants with white tenants. Mayor, mayor says he didn't say that, but that's what the city staff say, he said. They, he was overheard promising a white landlord named Chris Grimm, who lives in Bettendorf and owns property surrounding me, that he was going to get the lowlife out of the neighborhood, meaning me. He told this landlord that he was going to declare plants illegal in my yard. And since then, I, when he showed up in 2021, I had four dwarf peach trees in large flower pots. Each flower pot probably had a hundred dollars worth of potty soil in them. Four dwarf peach trees. The city staff have now removed three of those from my yard. I have one dwarf peach tree I purchased with my money. And Indigenous Day, I don't claim to be indigenous. I mentioned that before, but I'm as indigenous as I am Swedish or Bohemian and in some ways maybe more so. And please report 2022-0008-3620 involves the criminal destruction by white supremacists of religiously significant Native American art in my yard. No one has been arrested to date. I know exactly who is responsible, the top two people in the neighborhood department. I believe they're now attempting to make me go homeless using city authority. I'm asking the mayor, the alderman, to ask the legal people what's going on so that you know, because I'm now about to be trying to get the lawyers to fight for me. So, I'm just trying not to go homeless and do what I can. Like I said, I, I, I'm, I'm very offended that for, for two years now, I've been told that I'm an inferior lowlife and all the people that they identified as lowlifes were either black or mixed race and all the people that they specifically identified as, as superior, higher-class citizens were white. What I really wanted to talk about tonight, though, is I want to start to sign a little bit. I'm, I'm not very good at it, but I recently took some pictures and I planned to do a book called Save the Monarchs: A Photo Story of a Baby Boy Monarch Butterfly From Caterpillar to Chrysalis to Butterfly in Eighteen Days. I've got a ton of photographs that I took. I didn't get very many monarchs in this yard, in my yard this year, but I had, I took some photographs of a caterpillar and, and then I took some photographs of a chrysalis and the chrysalis changed colors and the last day before it hatched, you could see the orange wings through kind of the black translucent chrysalis. And they're really beautiful photographs. And then last week, when I got home from city council, it, the butterfly had come out and I got some really nice, beautiful photographs. So, from caterpillar to chrysalis to butterfly. And I thought, you know what? I'm trying to do some creative stuff. And I have the outline of the book. I essentially have the book written and I am fundraising. I created a GoFundMe campaign, a creative one. And it's called My Puppy Wants a Cheeseburger. So, if anyone would like to help me financially, whether it's because the city destroyed most of my food in my yard this year or because I am trying to do this book, which essentially I need someone to help with layout and design. I'm trying to look around to figure out who can do that. But I have all the photographs and essentially the book is written. And I have a GoFundMe called My Puppy Wants a Cheeseburger. And like I said, the photographs are real nice. I have a photograph of a moth and a praying mantis and, and another insect that I want to include, but, but two-thirds of the book is, or ninety percent of the book is essentially the caterpillar. And like I say, GoFundMe, My Puppy Wants a Cheeseburger. And this is part that I wrote and it just says, who knows what a butterfly remembers? I have this funny memory, or was it all just a strange dream? You see, I was there and it was sunny and warm and I was a fat and happy caterpillar and then I laid down to go to sleep. And when I woke up, I was a butterfly with soft, moist, folded wings. It seems too strange to be true. It must have been a dream, but it all feels so real. And I really wanted to talk a little bit more about that tonight, but I, I got to get back to, I'm very much afraid I'm going to be homeless very soon at the hands of the city government that said to a landlord in 2021 that they were going to use the city resources to make me go homeless. And I don't think that's how the city is supposed to operate. I think you're supposed to operate in a little different way.
Thank you, sir. Next, next, please.
My cousin, seven ward president NAACP. Ladies and gentlemen, the fifth ward alderman has detailed his experience as a black man, as a black member of the city council, which includes what is not limited to being subjected to use of racist slurs, including the N-word, by his colleagues in the council chambers, having colleagues refer to blacks as black peoples as colored, being ostracized by colleagues and staff, not being given the same information as his colleagues, and overall being subjected to different treatment. The NAACP strongly condemns the use of racist slurs, especially by a sitting council member. The use of outmoded and racially offensive language and the seemingly allowance for his colleagues on the city council to establish and maintain a racially hostile working environment for the gentleman from the fifth ward is unacceptable and offensive and dehumanizing to every black citizen who lives and works for the city of Davenport. Let me tell you what I got some great concerns about as a citizen, as the president of the NAACP. The complaints of racism by former alderman Peacock. The complaints of racism by a, a, a former black employee. The complaints of racism by black community members. The lack of transparency as to why do police officers spend more time with black citizens versus white citizens? We had a traffic study last year that I requested more information on, but, but was denied that information because it, quote, was going to cost five hundred more dollars to get that contractor back here. My, my, my. The perpetual underfunding of the Civil Rights Commission. I, 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 I mean, I've pleaded for the last three years as a number of, of, of the Civil Rights Commission, of, of the Civil Rights Commission to get an increase for the enormous workload that we have with the complaints that we get from housing, discrimination, in order for us to meet the, the workload down there. But what have we got? Zero. But the city's top three senior staff numbers, budget, I mean, paid is more than our budget. My, my, my. When I walk into this building, I, I, I see what I believe is bulletproof plexiglass on my left and my right and every other building has, you have to have a key card for access to it, but nothing for the civil rights office. Nothing. I requested that. So, they have to keep their doors locked. The directive is excluded from staff calls. I requested that she be included on that, but somehow, because somebody don't like her, she can't attend staff calls. Now, let me tell you, anytime somebody makes in the excess of one hundred thousand dollars a year, a, a, and you pay to perform a job, a particular mission, it ain't down to whether or not you like somebody. You should be told what you need to do. Taxpayer's dollars. And then lastly. I'm aware that some of you believe that this racist flow, this racist slur is nothing more than a little name calling. But let me tell you, I'm from Alabama. I sit in the back of these. I drink from a colored fountain. I don't know how the heck you can get a colored fountain. I've been called the N-word. I've seen my daddy ostracized. It has no place in our community and certainly not in, in a city council. The NAACP demands immediate action, including the removal of those who choose to engage in such actions.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
See me here tonight as you were when you saw me over at the Quad City Federation of Labor Building. My name is Rosa. And tonight, another Easter speech was read that made that person look like a damn fool. I do not, and I will never believe that Mr. Kelly is lying about being called the N-word and having another alderman talk about a colored person in the grocery store. He is not lying. He named three people that was in that room tonight. And I hope when the lawsuit and the court date come up and when these three people have to go in front of the courts that you tell the truth of what you heard. And don't try to hide someone's back because he's your good, good old boy. It ain't about that. It's about telling the truth about what you heard in that meeting. When you say something the same way every time you speak about it, you're not lying. And all of this could be done if someone would admit they done it. I don't like the word "I'm sorry" because I never believe you're sorry about nothing if you do anything. But maybe the alderman might accept his apology. If he says, "I'm sorry," that stops him from spending all this money that he's receiving to take the other alderman to court. Just say you're sorry and you guys admit it and we can just put all this behind us. And mayor, you already know that that is not acceptable. You know that. Because you wouldn't like it if we called you out of your name. You wouldn't like that. So, I'm just saying, when you guys get up there with his little trial, tell the truth. Tell the truth and let him know you ain't going to have his back like that. We'll go.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ron Swender, Davenport, Rock Island. Why do I speak here? Because I have a voice and I have an opinion and I can see things that were broken. It's time for fall cleaning and a clean sweep. There's too much going on in this council, way too much. Accusations, insinuations, not getting answers clear and transparent. You know, I, I've dealt with the system. This is my son's dog tag. He was guilty. So, I know how these people feel, losing a loved one. And I know that we need to have some answers. I understand you're in litigation, there's lawsuits. This has come out, that's come out. There's been many of area trying to shove and see who's responsible. Well, you know what? As it was stated in one meeting, this council with the mayor sets the agenda.
Hold on, sir. We need to discuss later, not now. Thank you, sir. Carry on.
Thank you, sir. Agenda, safety? You talk about a bar safety, what about the people that rent? You know, was it updated? Nope. How many more buildings are closed? This council has failed its duty. What do we do? We have, thank God, people have stepped forward and saying, well, maybe it's time for change. We'll see when the election comes up, but you got to remember one thing, folks. You work for the people. You pass things that the people didn't want. You haven't given answers to the people. We're not stupid. We're not ignorant, but we've reached our point of no return. And it is time for a change. I've never insulted this council. They've done some wonderful things, but you failed miserably. There's a grassy area with three dead bodies that's sat there. A woman who had her leg amputated and now waits in green grass and it just got moved. Pretty area. You know what? That area is a memorial to the three, the people that were killed because of the negligence of many, which I will not name. But we should have done better. We could have done better and we didn't do better. It cost the lives of three people. We had an apartment complex, everyone had to get out. We're going to rewrite, we're going to make it better for the people. Tell that to the three over there. Their spirit will always be there. That's what happens when you don't do what needs to be done. So, we failed. But I'll tell you right now, it's time for a change. You've done much good and I appreciate it, but it is time for a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is David S. Sidran, third ward. By the way, these new barricades really indicate the city council is terrified of its own citizens. When I'm addressing the city council, I'm not allowed to say the name or the job title of any city employee. So, I'm going to refer to the highest-paid city employee as Ms. $338,445 a year, or just Ms. $338,000 a year for short. I will call Ms. $338,000 a year assistant. Ms. $200... What? I can't name salaries? Like, what can I not do now? Am I not allowed to speak?
You are allowed to speak. Ladies and gentlemen, let us talk. Sir, you can speak. We know who you're talking about, right? So, just, just make your point to what you want to say without directing it to individuals. That's simple. Make your point about what your concern is. Thank you.
What I'm concerned about, Mr. Mayor, is not just the outrageous salaries of the city staff. $338,000 a year, $240,000 a year for an assistant. What I came here to talk about is actually the third person down on this organizational chart who can only refer to as Mr. $134,000 a year, or maybe I can't even refer to him as that. Now, on August 2nd, 2021, this person, who I cannot name nor his salary, issued this memo, which I got through FOIA. And it says, "August 2nd, 2021, re-inspections on existing violations on hold at 324 Main Street per Mr. $134,000 a year." We all know who it is. He's being sued for felonious manslaughter. That's who it is. He's on your city staff and you promised his transparency. Now, I'm going to jump ahead. I'm going to say a name I can say. Jamie Lycandro. I can say Jamie Lycandro, right? Jamie Lycandro, on June 15th, 2022, stood at this very podium and said, and I quoted- stood at this very podium and said, and I quote, "So, I got a few of these Iowa workforce tax credit applications coming through." Wow. And he needs the city's help. Now, I can say Jamie Lycandro's name because he's a slumlord, right? And he is tied to 324 Main Street with Andrew Walt. I can say his name, too. And all over these documents, you see Jamie Lycandro and you see Andrew Walt. But just coincidentally, and I'm gonna call our Alderwoman, Davenport Historic Preservation Consulting LLC, because that's the name of the business she runs, was hired by Mr. Lycandro to do one of those Iowa workforce tax credit applications for him previously. Okay? Here's the document.
Mr. Ezra, I'll give you, I'll continue here in a second. Folks, I'm gonna point at you and you're gonna move. You're gonna leave if you keep saying stuff, okay? Mr. Ezra, continue.
Who, are you talking to me?
No, Mr. Ezra, I'm not. You can, you can continue.
God, you make up the rules and you go along.
One more time and you will be done, okay? Ladies and gentlemen, we want to hear, we want to hear from you, not anybody else out there unless you'd like to get in line and speak, okay? So everybody in the audience, please refrain from any comments. Mr. Sidran, please continue.
The city council immediately passed this resolution, which I obtained via FOIA, which reads in part, quote, "Resolution for support of the submission of a workforce housing tax credit to the state of Iowa for 324 Main Street, the Davenport Project. Whereas the 324 Main Street project is located within the city's urban revitalization tax exemption area and is applying for the 10-year 100% exemption schedule. And whereas the URTE benefit awarded will meet the minimum city contribution of $1,000 per dwelling unit required by the WHTC program. Eighty units, that's 80,000 bucks at 324 Main Street. It is resolved, the city council of the city of Davenport, Iowa, that the 324 Main Street, Davenport Project is hereby fully supported and submitting an application for the workforce housing tax credit program." Now, city staff and the city council like to pretend that tax credits aren't real money. They are completely real money. For every dollar that the city or state gives a slumlord in tax credits, that's $1 less for police, fire, the homeless, the hungry, or just fixing potholes. What is also obvious is that Alderwoman, Davenport Historic Preservation Consulting LLC, knew the unsafe state of 324 Main Street.
Point of order, your honor. Sort of point of order. He's, he is mentioning the company that I have in conjunction with a building I never worked on.
Carrie, I just, don't say that, Mr. Sidran, please.
It's obvious that the people, the city staff, knew the condition of 324 Main Street. Now, you can shut me up all you want. But there's some very powerful Chicago attorneys and they are coming down on you guys like a railroad train. And there's nothing you're gonna do that's gonna stop them. And they are gonna crush you like a bug.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jessica Dolce, 2nd Ward. Just a couple things. I know people live, are watching live and thinks unless it was cut off. But if you're not registered for, get with me. I have registration sheets with me on hand at all times. Two, September 20th, city council meeting, I was not here. I was not present. I was dealing with mommy duties. But I watched from home, of course. And it absolutely disgusts me to have a alderman address what he's going through, not only to his council, not to himself, but to the public. Not me as a mother of two mixed children and having several nieces and nephews that are of race, whether it's Hispanic or black, whatever. It's absolutely unacceptable to use the N-word, whether it's GGA or ER. Rather you direct it to somebody or you just say it. It can be used and can be taken offense by somebody. You don't have to direct it. You don't have to call somebody to offend somebody. So let's just make that clear. Second, my third thing is, is, you know, like Diane said, 129 days in. And yet, no answer. This is kinda like the storm of the century. I know you guys probably have seen that movie. Give us what we want and we'll go away. But I'm gonna end it with this. My great grandma, may she rest in peace, always taught me, it doesn't matter what color you are. You're white, black, purple, pink, yellow, green. You all bleed the same. At the end of the day, you bleed red. I just wanna make this my closing statement. Keep pissing your, your city off. Because a lot of you won't have your seats next month.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yoshe Had, 3rd Ward. Just regarding, I'd like to thank Council for putting the matter on discussion. I'd also like to make it known that this, this should be a standard practice. We can't take the word of, of staff recommendations blindly. And I'm going to make, as a part of my discussion next week, as to why we cannot take staff recommendations blindly. Mr. Colgriff had actually told me that staff recommendations have been followed for the last 10 years and council has not opposed it in that timeframe. That, that is a problem. We need to question that. We need to question that. And we need to question all of the information that's given to us by anybody on staff. I'd also like to say, I don't wanna downplay this. I like to thank Mr. Jobden for, for the accolade you gave me. But I'd also like to say, we can't downplay this as just an outdoor permit. Because this leads to the removal of a license. This is the first step.
Mr. Yoc, this public for comment is for things other than the agenda. So we look forward to your comments on your particular license next week. If you'd like to talk about anything else other than that particular subject, we're, we're good to hear from you.
The only thing I, I guess, ask, I'm unfamiliar with this process, so the public, the discussion, will it be public?
Next week, certainly will. Usually I don't dialogue, but I'm just helping you because you're right.
I guess, other than that, everything is related to the, to my license, so.
So we look forward to hearing from you next week.
You can register to vote at Yoshis Bar and Filipino Canteen. We will take your registration there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Makana Dixon, 5th Ward. I just wanna come up here and say how disgusted I am from the behavior of some of the council members. As a black woman, it is unacceptable to hear that another part of my black community is called out of their name. Not only out of their name, but the most nastiest word you can say to a person of color. I'm thinking whether I should say the word or not. But it's been said in this room, nigger, nigger. Any of it should not be used.
That's correct. Don't say that word, please. I understand. I understand. I'm, I'm just asking.
Great. Well, I'm black, I can say it. That's how I feel about the situation. Because I am a history, I am a part of that history. My dad is 81 years old. I am a part of that. I am come right from the bloodline of an African-American that has lived through the pain. I have been raised up knowing the pain of that word. And my daddy told me, don't let anyone call you that word. And I will not stand by and let it be said by anybody else in front of me, nearing me. And if I can hear you, we got a problem. Because it's disrespectful. The ultimate disrespect. I don't know why there's an investigation by the Quiet City Times on September 26th, 2023. An alderman talked to the newspaper and said, "Confirmed there was a conversation with Kelly referring to, but declined to comment or specifics." That's the investigation right there. Period. Nothing else. One person admitted it. That's it. Figure it out. Now we got court days and you wanna run around the block? Take care of it. Take care of it like you took care of Cornette for calling somebody sweetie, honey, baby, lover, pie, whatever you wanna call it. Take care of it. Have you, take care of this. Instead, you stretch it upon weeks for what? Entertainment? For entertainment? Just the black community can get, has to live through this for another week? Or however, because somebody wants to file a lawsuit to clear their name? The newspaper already said it, so it's too late. So here I am, Makana Dixon, a black woman. I'm telling you, it's not okay. And it's, and the proof is already out. So what is an investigation for? For what? To, to, to make the pain go on? And I'm sorry that this man, Tim, had to sit here and publicly admit, not in front of just the people, but in front of you guys, saying that he was in the midst of him, he had to get this word called to him. You know how embarrassing that is? My dad is 81 and it's embarrassing to him. I'm 33, it's embarrassing to me. I have been called the word. And I, I remember when I was 16 years old, I had to go home and tell my daddy that I was called the N-word. And it was embarrassing. So in no way, shape, or form, colored, the N-word, whether it's ERA, whatever you ended with, should never be used. We just had Indonesians, people here. We just recognize them. Recognize us. We only get February and it's only 28 days. And y'all, I don't see any celebrations here about that. So respect my culture. All of you. I don't care who you are. Respect my culture. Respect my dark skin. Respect my ancestors. Respect our pain. We built this country. We, read the book and go back. We built this. And we wasn't paid for it. We were not paid for it. We were gonna do our best, we're gonna get hung and killed and our children were taken away from us. And we were fed to scraps. So what you have done by not taking care of it, you have unleashed the pain of the black community. Let it go on another week. I won't be back. Because you guys don't understand us.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Diane Salmon, 8th Ward. Hebrews 4:13 says, "Nothing in all creation is hidden from God's sight; everything is uncovered and laid bare before the eyes of whom we must give account." For some reason, we as selfish human beings seem to think we can do whatever we want and many times we don't stop to count the cost. It can end up being a good thing or it can be very disastrous. Tragically, 129 days ago, it was disastrous. And that's an understatement if there ever was one. The families of Brandon Colvin Sr., Daniel Priet and Ryan Hitchcock have yet to see anyone arrested or prosecuted for their deaths. Kwanisha Berry has yet to see anyone arrested or prosecuted for the loss of her leg. The residents of 324 Main Street have yet to see anyone arrested or prosecuted for the negligent acts that led up to the loss of their security and everything they own. Can you tell us why this is? We, your constituents, are waiting for answers and we have yet to receive a single one. Campaign promises mean nothing because we have seen where your priorities lie. It's in the pockets of the big companies and those who hold your skewed views of what you think Davenport needs and wants. You were real quick to illegally remove Derek Cornette from his seat for using pet names and having a couple of drinks before meetings. That's you're dragging your feet when it comes to a fellow council member being called derogatory names. Is this because of who did it and who was in the company of everyone in that moment? Why was a councilperson allowed to show up in person for the sham of a vote when they could barely stand up straight and they don't show up any other time? Please don't give us that ridiculous excuse saying it was their anxiety acting up. Because if it's bad enough to cause someone to be like that, you removed the wrong person from their seat. Actually, you did remove the wrong person from their seat because Derek Cornette has always interacted with his constituents. He held ward meetings, showed up to all the council meetings, and he's still showing up to these meetings, which is more than we can say for some of the other people. Favoritism will get you nowhere, especially when election day is just a stone's throw away. We should never be so prideful to think that we are above anyone else or above the law. Proverbs 16, 18 to 19 says, "Pride goes before destruction, a haughty spirit before a fall. Better to be lowly in spirit along with the oppressed than to share plunder with the proud." Our city is watching and waiting to see justice served for the residents of 324 Main Street and their families, for Tim Kelly and Derek Cornette. We are tired of empty promises and bullying tactics. We want real change for the good of our city, not just those who try to run it. Every single one of us will be held accountable on Judgment Day and there will be no one else to blame and no excuses to be made. I hope and pray that you will search your hearts and do the right thing while there is still time. Mark 3:25, "If a house is divided against itself, that house cannot stand." There should be nothing spoken behind closed doors that can't be said to the public unless you have something to hide. This is America. We still have free speech. We still have the right to say the things we want to say. And if we can't say it here, we'll say it on our social media and we will.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and residents of Davenport, Iowa. My name is Cornelius Miller. I live in the 8th Ward. There has been so much done and said that leads to me to believe that there are no people in our local government who's paying attention. As I entered the room tonight over to my right, I saw a sign and a barricade that said, "Staff only." If the room is not big enough, let's go to another location. You have simply shown and drawn many attributes of separation from the citizens and the staff. Where I come from, staff, staff and citizens sit together. If it's not enough room, you go to a bigger setting. To our mayor, with no attacks, no personal tactics or belittling anyone, we must first find the calm at the head of the table, not just amongst other people and certain people. There are times I feel that you speak out when you shouldn't. And you have aldermen who sit and says nothing. That's not the way it should be. You only speak when you have drawn to point of order or point of information. You can't be the mayor and the alderman. As we sit here tonight, we know the truth. It shines bright like a star from a silver socket. Racism is an issue. Certain people having certain privileges is an issue. There is only one African-American on the board of aldermen. That's an issue. Why don't we redistrict just like we did for a certain alderwoman and find more representation for our African-American people? For we know, I can only say for myself, that we have a stacked deck against us. I can say only for myself, that anything goes up must come down. I can only say for myself, as I heard a great speech this past Saturday, either we're gonna bite the bullet or we're gonna cast the ballot. Only I can give an account for the things that I do. But we most certainly, we have to give an account for the things that we do when we stand before our great God. Yes, the other night as I left here, many people laughed and snickered because I said my name was Dr. Cornelius Davis Miller. Yes, it's me. It's true. I have a doctorate education, but I still know how to treat people. I still know how to come out of my suit and my tie and get hands-on with the people in my community. Don't let this title separate you from your human beings and your civil duties. You was elected to be picked on. You was elected to hear things that you might not want to hear. But in all facts and manner, we must understand we're human beings with one cause, that's to love one another and treat others how you wanna be treated. Yes, I know this speech may seem a little corny, but for those who sit at this table, you would think that you would understand what it means to treat others like they should be treated. As I get ready to conclude this, think about it. Have you really given your best as an alderman or a mayor or a city leader? Have you really given your best in being honest? Have you really considered other people's needs before your titles? Have you considered what you're... Have you considered what you're really sitting at the head of this table for? Have you lined your pockets with money? Have you scratched back? Are you playing the buddy-buddy system? If so, you all got it mixed up. You've all got it screwed up, because you are not just politicians, but you are public servants. And anything you do in the name of Davenport, Iowa, in the name of an alderman, in the name of a mayor, should be politics over people, but it should be people over politics. It's sad. It's sad, because you don't understand the cries of the people who are crying out to you, because you have a title. You sit in your chairs and you talk about decorum, but you should show decorum only when you're in those seats, but you should show decorum at all times, what you say about people, how you treat people, your mind of consideration of other people, because at the end of the day, there is a God. He sit high, and he looks low. We need to stop pimping people for their votes. Be truthful. Stop lying to people about what you're gonna do, because it all gonna come to an end.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm a resident of the Fifth Ward. I want you all to look around the dais, and I want you to look around City Hall, and tell me how many black people there are in those two places. For a very, very long time, I was the only black person who worked full-time at City Hall. And I want you to think about what an isolating experience that has been and what it continues to be. I want you to think about the statement that Alderman Kelly made a couple of weeks ago. He was sitting at the dais, his voice cracking, on the verge of tears, describing how he's been subjected to somebody using racial slurs in this room. And I know how you feel, because I was sexually assaulted in this room, and nobody gave a damn. He is the only reason that we know about what was said, because he's a city council member, and he can take the time to say it, pressing his button. Even though he had reported that behavior internally before disclosing it publicly in the meeting, there was no investigation that was launched. I understand that as well. Those of us who were watching that meeting from home were gobsmacked. For the people who were sitting in the room, they were probably also shocked. It was mind-boggling that he dropped such a big bomb and nobody said a word. No one had a response. I want you to think about that. I want you to think about how your silence made him feel. Nobody said, "I'm sorry you had that experience." Nobody said, "Tim, I was stupid. I didn't know that I shouldn't have said that," which is really not believable, but you could have said it, at least pretend for us. And I want you to think about how you all have responded in the days and weeks since that has happened. Everybody is saying, "Oh, well, only if Alderman Kelly wants an investigation, that's when we'll do an investigation. He has to request it," because using racial slurs isn't illegal. It's not discriminatory. You have to be directing it at him. And he never said that. He never accused anyone of directing these statements at him. He said it was said in front of him. And he should not have to be your resident black person to teach you what it is and is not appropriate to say to and in front of black people. You should know that on your own. Nobody should have to tell you that. For those of us who are paying attention, it is very clear that nobody cares about racism within the city of Davenport. Nobody cares about the use of racial slurs. Nobody cares about calling black people colored. I have never in my life heard of anybody being called colored in my living days. My mother's birth certificate says Negro, and she was born in Mississippi and pick cotton every day, but not colored. I mean, that's from the 30s, the 50s. Who was using colored here in Iowa? No one. But somehow, it's acceptable here in City Hall. And the only way that it's gonna be actionable to anybody is if Tim takes it up, because it's a black issue. He has to be the one to file a complaint. Not only did he have to be the one to bring it forward, he has to be the one to file a complaint. It's Tim's problem. That's a black issue. So now he's tasked with being subjected to people from the media contacting him, his constituents contacting him, wanting to know the specifics of exactly what was said, because nobody else has the courage to say what they heard. Nobody has the courage to say, "I should not have said that. It was inappropriate." And nobody is holding them accountable, the same way we've seen for years. As a staff person here at City Hall, I demand an investigation. This is a racially hostile working environment, and I don't want a task, a group of volunteers investigating it. I want professionals. I'm requesting that you hire a law firm, an independent law firm, and I want an investigation conducted, because there's a racially hostile working environment here at City Hall. There is a theme that has been going on for weeks and weeks and weeks. People have been coming forward, saying you have different strokes for different folks. There is different treatment. And every week, you all sit there and scowl at people as if you're angry that the constituents are coming here to talk to you, instead of just listening to them. Everybody is not making up stories to say that they feel like they've been treated differently. I reported harassment by the missing alderman for years. There was never an investigation conducted. This woman is all over the internet accusing me of things, saying I was in a terrorist group. I did this, I did that. No investigation.
Thank you, ma'am.
I expect an investigation.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Well, Shana Dixon, Fifth Ward. That young lady, I've ne, I heard about some things, but as she came up here and talking, just, it just make my stomach hurt. It make my stomach hurt so bad. But I come up here to say something, because I just wanna admit something. These barricades, it's probably because of me. That's just true. Because after the meeting was turned out last week, I came to ask somebody a question, because I felt like it would be a good question just to ask. It has something to do with that newspaper article. And I asked a question to this person, I don't wanna be point of order or anything this evening. That's my favorite saying for Davenport County, this building, point of order. We hear it all the time. But I came up and I asked a city council member, "Why didn't you say something after the N-word was used?" And this person replied to me, "I did. I did." What, "I did what?" I, 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 I did? So if he did, why was this taken care of weeks ago? Why are we still dealing with this? I, I don't understand this. It's exhausting. And I just wanna say this. I've seen Tim Kel, many people don't know this, but I'm gonna just tell it. Tim Kelly has known me since I was 17, 18 years old. Nowhere near the woman I am now. And to see this man depleted, his face, his body leg, which he hurts, damn it! It doesn't matter. It was said. You should not use that word in this building. Go home and say it to your friends, and your friend writing you out. Your friend, your buddy writing you out, in the newspaper, Quad City Times. Damn it, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, because you said you don't like First Act Way, but you have to understand where I see noticement for most of my life, and to know the hurt, to see him with his eyes casting down. This man has blown me up to the woman. You can tell, nowhere, if I act the way I act when this man met me, you would be disappointed. So I owe this man a lot. He's a strong, one of the strongest men I know. And if I see him up here, and he, he's not looking the same, and I don't blame him, because if somebody used the N-word around me, I wouldn't either. Mr. Tim, like I told you, head up. Try to stop. This is ridiculous. And for him to say, "I did," why are we still here? None of us, Robert, would have known if he did, if he did, if the proper precautions were taken. Mr. Tim would never have had to say that out of his words weeks ago. I wouldn't know what I did actually helped. I, I know what I did probably got these barricades put up. This has got to stop. It had, it had the, I wanna know, has the Board of People that you chose have actually already been picked? That's what we wanted to know, for real. But I feel like the full investigation, that outside of everybody here needs to be done. Nobody in this building is be picking anybody. Damn it. This is ridiculous. This is sick. And I didn't even say nothing last week, when I heard the information. I did say something. And then after I did, and when I asked him, well, I'm sorry, I didn't even mean to release the, well, all of them were him's, pretty much, so it doesn't matter. Damn it. And this person was very upset, and I come up there regular. "Mr. so-and-so, can I ask you a question?" Probably a little heightened, but this person was so high-strung, so you could tell, they're tired of their job. All the way up here, and I'm coming up, "I just wanna ask you a question." That's it. So you're tired of your job, just let it go. Just let it go. There's people in this community that's willing and willing to serve the community. Let them do it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing no other counsel, or, sorry, public. Any report, Ms. Merritt? Okay. Will an alderman move to go to executive session, discuss strategy of counsel in matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5? Motion, second please. Roll call. And before you do the roll call, Mr. Krupp, just to let everybody know, we will not be coming back here. We will adjourn from the executive session. I would ask the council folks, I understand it's been kinda long, if you have to go to restroom or do whatever, we understand that, but please make your way up there pretty quickly. So, Mr. Krupp, please call the roll. Kelly?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
Ayesha, your honor? Okay, we'll go to executive session, adjourn from there.